When I open up the meeting, it's 7:03. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It'll be uploaded to YouTube and it'll also be live on Comcast Cable. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention the passing of Dayton resident Richard Blow. I would also like to mention the passing of F. David Sylvia. Francis David Sylvia was a longtime resident of Dayton. He was in my class, the first class, at Dayton Rehoboth. And I think most people in town remember David because although he lived in Rainham, when he passed, he was very, very active in the Dayton Lions Club and actually served for president for a couple of years. So in the memory of David Sylvia and Blow, I will ask for one more silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind the residents of Dayton that our next meeting is November 20th. It's going to be at the Old Town Hall. It won't be live, but it will be on cable eventually. So if you want to see it live, it'll be there next Wednesday at 7 o'clock. And we also have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen this coming Monday on the 18th in Rehoboth at 7 o'clock also. Our first item is Brownie Troop 82230. Who's representing them? Who's going to speak on their behalf?
It's okay, keep coming. Yep.
So we've invited this Daisy Troop, this Brownie Troop, to come and be recognized for all the work that they've done this past fall. So who's actually speaking for them?
They're all going to be.
Okay, good.
So Lucy, why don't you go first?
My name is Lucy. As part of our community service project, our troop collected used and broken crayons. Our troop learned that crayons are not biodegradable. They just sit and land fields, which is bad for our environment. The crayon is in... And they say they collect used and broken crayons. They melt them down and make new crayons. These new crayons are donated to children's hospitals across the country.
My name is Kayla. We collected crayons during our cookie booths. We also had boxes set up at the town hall. And we asked our art teacher, Ms. Ribano, at Dayton Elementary School to help us collect broken crayons from classrooms. We collected crayons from December through April. Our troop then sorted the crayons by color and prepared them to be shipped to the Crayon Initiative in California. Our troop collected 102 pounds of crayons, which were all recycled.
My name is Lyne. And as a community service project, our troop worked on was collecting used books plus the Books Are Wings. This program collects gently used books and gives the books to children in kindergarten through 12th grade. Who do not have access to books at home? We set up a collection box at a cookie booth and at the town hall. We collected books from December through April.
Hello, my name is Julia. In April, Ms. Paige from Books Are Wings came to our meeting to sort and collect the books. And she also spoke with us about the Books Are Wings organization. Our troop, through our collection efforts, was able to donate a total of 1,200 books to the organization.
Hi, my name is Olivia. This past August, our troop worked with the Tigers and Bears of Pack 45 to collect school supplies for Dayton Elementary School and Dayton Middle School. We also worked together to collect items for the Dayton Food Country. We had collection boxes set up at the town hall, Arusos Alice's, and Dayton House of Pizza.
My name is Lucy. And the Tigers and Bears of Pack 45 then moved to organize and sort the school supplies and food country items. We handed everything over to Ms. Wilkins, who is the school nurse at the Dayton Middle School. And also a member of the Lions Club, Ms. Wilkins.
Distribute it.
Distributed the school supplies in turn at Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle School. Ms. Wilkins also took our donations to the Dayton Food Country.
That's it. No time. Oh, I...
My name is I. When our troop went, we were able to get supplies at the Dayton Agricultural Society to use them. We also sent over 50 boxes of cookies to our troops overseas.
Yeah, that's it.
No. That's the Daisy Troop.
Okay.
Got a lot of active youth in this town. That's right. Great job, lady.
Okay, so the next item is the appointment of a full-time patrolman, chief.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. Of course, I'd like to thank Sergeant John Crohn for being here and Patrolman Chris McGinn for being here. Thank those guys. I'm here tonight to recommend a full-time patrolman to the police department. Last couple of weeks, say more than a couple of weeks, a month and a half, we conducted some interviews with my three sergeants, myself, on getting some reserves, police officers for the department, some part-time dispatches. We're in the process of that now. Sergeant Crohn has been training the reserves now. He's starting with them. The part-time dispatcher is training and doing very well right now. So it's working out. So tonight, I'm here to ask for a full-time police officer. We interviewed this one gentleman, sitting in the front row here. And in that interview, myself, my three sergeants thought he was very impressive. Kid had a lot on his plate. His first, I want to talk a little about him. He started out as a correction officer in New Hampshire. That was his first job and started from 2015 to 2019. He stayed there, he left there, and he also attended an academy for that. Let me tell you something. This kid has attended so many academies and he's going to have to attend another one. So good luck to him, but I think he can handle it. He left there, he went to Pittsfield Police Department, which is in New Hampshire. He started there 2019. He is still present right now, but he wants to make his way back here. He also is a reserve police officer in another department up there. And he started there in 2017 and he's present and he's still working there, too. He was in the military, Air Force. He served just five years in the Air Force. So this kid's got a lot that he's done. Looking at the full-time academies, I just want to go through some of the hours, how many hours this kid's put in for academies. In the full-time academy for the police department, he put 684 hours. In the part-time academy, he put 200 hours. In the corrections, he put 373 hours. And then in the, he went into a basic military training before in the Air Force and that was an eight-week program that he did that, okay? So he's, that's a lot. This kid's done a lot. So, you know, it's my recommendation that I want to do a conditional employment. So hire Tyler Hazel to the Dayton Police Department as a full-time patrolman. What's going to happen here is he'll have to do his physicals and all this other stuff. He can't work on a waiver with us because he has never attended a Massachusetts Police Academy. My sergeant checked into that. He did a lot of footwork on it. I appreciate that. And he cannot work on a waiver. So he will attend academy in February in Boston, right, Sarge? So he'll attend there. He'll attend the, it's like six-months academy. So here he goes. He's going to go through another academy, but he can handle it. I know he can. Very impressive. So my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is that we conditional employment to Tyler Hazel to have him do his physicals and all this proper stuff that he has to have and put him on as a full-time member of the department.
Does the board have any questions?
Can you tell us something about yourself? Where did you go to high school?
I told them. I actually went to DR. I grew up in Rehoboth. I ended up moving up to New Hampshire after I got a basic training. I got a job in corrections. Now I have been just working to move back down this way and, you know, come be closer to family and stuff like that.
Will you be able to keep your jobs until you start the academy?
Yes, I will.
That's good.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No, he answered my question. I was going to ask if you had ties to the area, like how you knew about Dayton.
Yes, so my father works for the town. And they, so my parents live right in Rehoboth. So obviously, I grew up in Rehoboth as well and I went to Dayton Rehoboth High School, so.
I didn't put two and two together, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Brett and I are both alumni of DIOCE. We always plug that, you know?
I dated someone from DIOCE. Put that on the record there.
Related by proxy.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Tyler P. Hazel to the Dayton Police Department as a full-time officer when he completes training.
Yes.
As recommended by the chief.
A second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstentions? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Tyler.
Tyler, there's one catch. One catch. I've only been to one academy graduation. I was very impressed. I would be honored if I get an invitation to yours. Obviously, the whole board, but I just want to say I wish you the best because I was bowled over by that graduation and everything that took place that night. I know some of you were there. Some of the officers were there that night. So good luck looking forward to that ceremony.
I know the academy is not till February, but Sergeant Crohn will be keeping in contact with him, getting this thing set up and we'll have that done. And I can just let, you know, town administration, I'll let you guys are aware of it, what he's done. And we'll go from there, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
You're working for a great department. You've got a great chief and sergeant and others, members of the police department. So you're very fortunate, so welcome aboard.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, chief. You don't have to stay.
I know. It's obligated.
You can if you want.
I'm the friend, I can't get out, yeah.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Congratulations, bye.
Good work, chief.
That's right. Got a good one.
He's going to do a good job. He's in good hands.
I didn't know it was five academies, this poor guy.
I know, that's a lot. I was going to make a joke that he had a PhD in public safety.
Chief, will...
I'm going to give one, I wish you did. It's a good one.
Will, like when you go to college, if you're taking courses here, there, and everywhere, credits carry, will he have any kind of carryover or recognition for what he's done when he goes to the academy? You have to start all over again? If it's reciprocal?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Well, some of the training is repetitive, but the, you know, Mass laws are obviously different from New Hampshire, so I'm sure that's why he's going to do that.
It's good.
It was a good choice. The next item is the public announcement for the notice of acquisition and consent to reduction of notice period. This was properly posted like it was supposed to be. It was the form and everything else was supposed to be posted.
Chief, are you here for this?
He's here for the speed study. No, he's here for the speed.
No, no.
Like, don't leave, I need you.
Yeah, I spoke to him already, but this was supposed to be at 7:10, so I want to get this done before, I want the public to have their input on this. Is there anybody here that wishes to be heard on this?
Do you have anything you'd like to say, chief?
I had no idea what this was when I looked at it on the agenda.
Well, we discussed this last time and we actually have it as a public hearing. So we need to notify the state, send a certificate of notice that we've done everything properly. And we also get to vote on reducing the number of days from 120 to 60 days, if that's the wish of the board. So is that, would the board be interested in reducing the amount of waiting time on this so the state can purchase this property in 60 days rather than 120 days? Because I believe the clock starts today. Yep.
Okay, I see no reason not to, I see no reason to delay it 60 days. I mean, the land carries two restrictions on it. Oh, this is not, this is not, this is the property that was formerly the Sanson Farm.
Correct, yes.
No, I see no reason to delay it.
This is the property with the restriction?
Right.
Okay, just making sure. No, I see no issue to delay.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we...
I was just reading the wording.
Notify the state that we have no objection to reducing the amount of time to 60 days for the planned acquisition of Project 19A02 KJ Arujo Limited.
Sarah Seigler. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstentions? The ayes have it.
Now you just need to read this into the record.
And then this is for him?
The second page is for him.
Okay, but he signs that right now.
And we have to read this into the record.
Right now?
Yep. I mean, Karen's just going to type it from the letter, but...
What am I reading? Am I reading?
You're reading the certificate of notice? I mean, confirmation of notice. Confirmation of notice, excuse me.
Confirmation of notice regarding proposed acquisition of the agricultural preservation restriction. In compliance with the general law, Chapter 7C, Section 37, notice is hereby given that an announcement at a public meeting was held for the purpose of disclosing the conditions or reasons supporting the Commonwealth's proposed acquisition of the agricultural preservation restriction, (API), on certain property in the municipality of Dayton as more particularly described in the attached notice of proposed acquisition. The date, time, and place of the hearing is on 11/13/19 at 7:10, and it was at the Dayton Town Hall. I certify that the confirmation of notice regarding proposed acquisition of the agricultural preservation restriction was posted or published in the following manner. I further certify that announcement was held at the place, date, and time indicated in this notice. You will notice that Brett had a pen.
Assistant.
I did have one, though. You're technically correct. When you noticed.
Brady for the alley-oop.
Yes. Keeping me together. Thank you for staying for this, chief. You're the best.
Any public input? If not, we'll go to the town administrator's report.
Okay. So a while back, we had heard from quite a few residents, and we still hear from these residents on Facebook, email, about town-wide, really, traffic concerns. It started over conversation with Forest Street. Then there was some scuttle, not scuttlebutt, but comments about Main Street. We were talking about a crosswalk. And then the conversation really showed that it's not just one street. It's a lot of streets and we need to figure out what we should do. We talked about speed zones, which I actually think would, after having this study, would apply in one specific area. We talked about doing a town-wide speed limit at 25 miles per hour, which is per state Mass General law that we're allowed to do that, but we thought that probably wouldn't fit. It's not really a one-size-fits-all here. And so we also discussed working with Mass DOT in order to set the speed limits and kind of reconfigure everything. The problem with working with Mass DOT to reset the speed limits is that they go by the average speed, not necessarily lower. If people, to your point, at one of those meetings, selectmen's office, if people are already not obeying the speed limit at a certain posted, it's just going to go up and then speeds continue to go up. So it doesn't really solve the problem. We conducted this study through Serpide. We get a snapshot at what those average speeds will be. In my opinion, they were higher than anticipated on quite a few streets. I actually should read off the streets that were done. So the locations that we took into account here for this study were Center Street, west of 138, Cedar Street, Forest Street, Horton Street, Main Street, Maple Street, Pleasant Street, Tremont Street, Wellington Street, and Wheeler Street. And this was voted upon by you at a previous meeting. And then there was also some older data in April, so not really that old, for Center Street at the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge, William Street, south of Tremont, and William Street, north of Cedar. So we've compiled all of this data. And what stood out, really, was traffic on Horton Street, Main Street, and Pleasant Street, and Tremont Street, which were 48 miles an hour and 49 miles an hour. I received this and immediately asked the police chief to move the mobile trailer from its location at the, sort of the base of the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge and move it over to Pleasant Street as that is primarily residential, rather narrow, with a bridge that is, it's got a cement... What's that thing? Like a barrier, so it's not very safe. And then the plan is to also move that to Horton Street after it does its stint on Pleasant Street. The chief and I also talked about other ways to sort of ramp up our enforcement while we, the board and myself, work together and handle this administratively with Mass DOT. So we talked about taking the existing speed trailer that operates off of a car battery and seeing if Jeff Gagnon could make it not operate off the car battery and solar, maybe, or kind of rig it around so that it doesn't need a cruiser attached to it. We talked about purchasing a new one. The price of that was about $7,000, I believe. We also talked about putting up the flashing speed limit signs that I've seen in other communities, that all they do is just remind you, "Yoo-hoo, you're speeding." Cars these days are built better. You don't feel the speed and easily you're going faster than you even realize. And those signs help you kind of keep engaged. And, you know, you might be driving along, jamming out to a song, and then flying down the street. So we've taken those steps to sort of tackle this in that kind of manner. But now it comes back to you to determine whether or not you'd like to do speed zoning, revisit the 25 mile an hour. My recommendation is that we look at speed zoning for the Pleasant Street, Main Street, kind of historical area. I think the criteria would fit. There are some costs to that. I do not recommend working with Mass DOT to try to lower the speed limits because I think this is a picture that shows we won't end up with lowered speed limits. We will end up with higher speed limits. And I don't think that's really what anybody's after.
What is that based on? Do you have experience with MassDOT that shows that the average speed is what they're going to go by?
That's their process. That's how, so you work with them, you apply with them, you show them this data, and you engage with them to start doing that. And they take the average speed and set the speed limit that way. And now we have this information ahead of time that this is kind of what the speeds are going to look like. And I think 50 miles an hour on Main Street is absurd.
Did we get a cost on those signs, those flashing signs? Do we?
Those were $4,000.
Just for once?
Yes. We got a code on that. Those were $4,000. To put on the poles just to flash your speed.
Yep.
And then we looked at a trailer, a new one. It's about $700. But I just want to comment on the town administrator. First of all, I thank her for doing that study. That helped us out a lot to figure out what streets people are going over the speed limit or the airspeeds. And as you can see, like she said, there's several of them. What we've been doing is I try to get the guys out there, this, like you said, the sign is on Pleasant Street and now I want to move it up. It looked like Horton Street was a high-speed area. And as you figured out, it's probably... And as you figured out, it's probably kids going to school. There's no doubt about that. And we've been out there trying to get guys in certain areas to watch the areas like Forest Street's one, in fact, guys on Pleasant Street. And there are guys writing tickets here. They are writing people up. I mean, they don't write everybody up, but they do write people up when they think it should be done. I know that the sign, like I said, is on Pleasant Street. We're gonna probably move it this week up to Horton Street and move it over there. You know, and we've had this conversation. There's, there's speed everywhere, but my concern in the town, in town selection, you, in Maryland, it's, we don't worry about that, town, that's the world we're worried about. We gotta try to control this, and we need to do that. And it just, it's just, it's way overboard how people are driving. I mean, they just don't get it. I mean, you have several people that walk on Forest Street, ride bikes, you got kids. And, you know, and sometimes we stop the person, and it's the person who lives on that road. But they'll complain how fast cars are going, but then the guys have stopped somebody who live on that street. So, you know, we're trying to enforce it. I could put somebody out there, a couple of guys out there from certain times, and all they should, they're gonna do is stop people, write people up. That's what they're there for. Not to answer the call, because I've ever heard somebody else. We can set something like that. We did that years ago. We tried that. And maybe something like that we could do, bring some guys in on certain times to enforce it. You know, there's things we can do, but, you know, it's just, it just goes on, it just keeps, and it just...
We can kind of do that relatively immediately, right? Aside from funding, I mean, there are some options for us to take care of purchasing those things, and then again, working with Jeff on the old, the older trailer to try to see if we can get that resurrected. And then in the meantime, we do administratively, we work with Mass DOT on the speed zoning. And I'm just recommending Pleasant Street, but maybe there's another. I mean, to me, that makes the most sense because it's primarily residential, it's a historic area. It's kind of seasonal, so people from outside are, you know, outside the town, outside the neighborhood, they're using it, so I think it makes sense there. Maybe there's other areas that it makes sense at.
So what do you mean by speed zoning then? I guess I'm like, because you're implying that we shouldn't get involved with Mass DOT because they're gonna go with the average speed, but how does that work then for Pleasant Street?
The speed zoning. You, oh, you work with Mass DOT. We don't set speed limits. Mass DOT does. So you work with Mass DOT regardless, but if you went and just said, "Mass DOT, I'd like to change a speed limit on this road," they take the combined average speed. And we get a snapshot that that's gonna be too high, in my opinion. Maybe you don't share that. I was surprised by how high some of these other streets were, specifically Main Street, due to its tough condition right now. So the speed zoning is a different avenue, and you basically have, like you'll see it around schools, obviously, but you zone the areas, and you work with Mass DOT. It's a little bit more involved with engineering, but I think in that area, it makes sense to, to make that commitment. And I haven't, I've only done very...
I think what his question is, how is that different than just working with them to lower the speed limit on a street? Was that your point?
Yes, yes.
If you just work with them to lower, so I believe we can argue that a speed limit on Pleasant Street should arguably be lower, like thirty, maybe even twenty-five miles an hour, versus Tremont Street is appropriate to maybe be forty. Do we not share that? If we don't share that, then...
It is forty, in one section.
But it shouldn't be near where Selectmen Gulart and I live, because that is residential. The part that's forty is towards the other end near William Street.
So you would zone that area. This is a residential part. William Street's another good example. You've got more commercial on one side than you do other, it's kind of residential, where Paul Patrico is trying to put the car dealership, that's a lot of residential there. So you'd zone that in a different way. But it does take engineering work, and it does, so there's a cost, and it takes a long time. That's why I was working with the chief to sort of have more immediate answers for you, really.
To approve it?
The speed zones, yes.
The speed zones, yeah. Safety, I forget what exactly they call them.
I think it's called the seat, speed safety zone. I'm sorry, you're right.
I have a couple thoughts. So I agree we shouldn't do a town-wide twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, and that's because some roads, like William Street, especially where there's not a lot of houses, towards Shop Sock Road. I'm okay with that being slightly higher than maybe, you know, Pleasant Street, for example, would be. I do want to amend something already said. So I'm not saying we shouldn't not lower speed limits. I think that that might be a good option because unfortunately, when the police department hands out a ticket, it's gonna be higher than if the speed limit were higher. Do you know what I mean? Like the ticket will be more, they might be, might be maybe less likely to speed again. But I think there's, there's something we can definitely do now, and that's maybe increase enforcement, speed, speed enforcement, like you were saying, Chief, at certain times. I'm thinking like peak morning, peak evening, the commuting times. I don't know exactly what time Selectmen Gulart, maybe six to eight AM. I don't know the exact hours. I would defer to you for that. But I think that's a good idea. I do think we should have another one of those. Yeah, trailers, the speed trailers. Regarding lowering speed limits, if you recall at one of the meetings, I had initially brought up the safety zones, speed zones, whatever term they go by. I think that's more of a longer-term solution, rather than whereas enforcement is more like short-term while we kind of get things rolling on the longer-term proposals. But I'll, I want to hear what my colleagues think as well. But that was a good idea, Chief. I think that's a good idea for sure.
Well, I'm definitely interested in the enforcement. That's the best way we're gonna stop some of the speeding. I'm also interested in getting another, I don't like the name that they call those machines, but one of those that people will see when they're driving by what their, what their speed is. So I would be interested in probably at the annual town meeting.
Bring up a book, it's like what Zee said about speed signs and all this stuff, but if you look at William Street, and you all know, if you travel, the speed limit signs change in every different spot up there.
Yeah.
I mean, they go from fifty ones to one end to thirty on another end, forty-five in the middle. So it's, it's, it's not just one same speed, it's, it varies. There's all different speed limit signs up there. But those have been there for a long time. I mean, that was years that they were there, and that hasn't been changed. So that, that's kind of a funny street for, for speed limit signs up there. They're just different speeds they have, and drop signals out there, you know, so. You said enforcement. What we've been doing is, we've been trying to get, you know, the guys on the shift would go on Forest Street at six AM. You know, the people going to work, and then in the afternoon, people coming home, four o'clock before the midnight shift comes in, they'll go up to another street and sit there for an hour or something, an hour and a half, and whatever street, like I've told them Pleasant Street's big. I told them Pleasant Street, Forest Street, Main Street. I mean, there's a lot, but those are some of the concerned ones, like the town administrator said, that we're trying to look at.
I think Horton Street also because there's a lot, there's a lot of students.
There's no question, that's what it is.
Yeah.
And when she said Maple, too, some kids go Maple Street to Oak, to go to the high school. They don't go Horton Street.
When I prioritized, so, confession, I did go by, I understand your argument for the combined speed. Unfortunately, when I did my analysis of the study, I sort of went by the average speed, so when you were mentioning Pleasant Street, initially I didn't really understand because the average, so the posted speed is forty and the average speed is forty-one, so I didn't understand why that was on your priority list, because when I did, went through, the, I kind of prioritized, so I did, number one was Horton Street because of the school. And I understand it probably as students. My concern is students endangering other students with, with sort of reckless driving. Main Street, Cedar Street, Maple Street, Wellington Street, and Tremont Street, but I just went on the averages, so I'm interested to hear what my colleagues came up with. I don't, I don't know if everyone did like a one, two, three, four, five.
I can tell you, I didn't do that, but I did look at the study, and I was concerned about Horton Street as well. You know, William Street also, I mean, it's, at the Dayton Historic Society where Center Street is, I don't know how many times I've seen close to accidents happen, and there are people either pulling out when a car's coming down the hill. It's terrible. So in this report, I need some explanation. It says, for example, Pleasant Street, "There is no speed limit recorded in Mass DOT's road inventory file for this road, but a speed limit sign is posted at forty miles per hour." What, what does that mean? That there's no, so we don't have, we...
The state didn't set anything for that.
The state didn't set it. Not the town, but it's the state didn't set it.
So the town can't set a speed limit. The state does it, and there's like literally a book, and it has where the location of that sign is, how many. It would say William Street is fifty here and forty-five here and all of that. And when you replace a speed limit sign, it has to go in the same spot. If you move it around, you're out of compliance. A speed tick, a speeding ticket is not enforceable, it's not compliant. Pleasant Street apparently doesn't have, there's nothing on record that shows what this is. So, you know, it's, that's part of the reason why it's flagged for me to, to really look at this one, my recommendation.
There's a lot of streets.
No, you can't just go and change the sign.
I guess my question is, if it's not on file with Mass DOT, then how did they know what speed limit sign to put out there?
That's the question. Who decided to put that, who decided to put that out there?
I'm troubled by this, obviously, because we're putting signs up and we're not...
No, no.
Not we, I think they did, but it's still not on file, so I'm just confused.
The signs that are out there, correct me if I'm wrong, have been around for years and years. Tom Ferry does not put up speed limit signs because he knows he can't do it. So what you're seeing out there on the roads has been there for years and years, and it could have been a board of selectmen telling the superintendent way back then, "Do something, put up a sign."
Yes.
And that's how it all occurred.
So those aren't real.
I wasn't questioning Tom Ferry's job at all. I wasn't questioning who put the sign up, but what I'm saying is if there's nothing that Mass DOT has for that speed limit, how are we able to put a sign up?
Which is concerning.
Then it's not giving people tickets.
Exactly.
So...
So I have that same concern. Also, I've noticed this more and more, so my car now will tell me what, like on my GPS tells me what the speed limit is. It's always wrong when I'm here. I don't know why.
Same thing with the car I'm driving now.
Yeah, it's off by five miles an hour.
It's too high.
The one on your car is too high?
The one that's coming up on my dash telling me the posted speed limit is too high in cases. For example, if you...
Mine just randomly is not right.
If you go by the, it's correct sometimes, but when you drive by the Bennett School, there's a twenty mile per hour thing there. Tells me I can do thirty-five.
Right. And so because I cannot find, and obviously they couldn't find from Mass DOT a posted speed limit, to me, it calls everything into question, and I am inclined to fix it, so...
Okay, but can I, I don't mean to belabor the point, and maybe I didn't understand something. It's been a long week. So...
It's one of those like...
It's been that kind of week.
That's telling.
So what? I'm not saying we would do this. I'm not saying we should do this, but what precludes the town from saying, "We're gonna change that sign out in the exact same spot from forty to thirty"? Nothing's on file.
Well, for Pleasant Street, right, but you're not supposed to, like, that's a really terrible practice. So we need to be sure.
There is nothing on file. They wouldn't even know.
We need to be sure what we're posting.
I guess I'm saying, so for Pleasant Street, to your example, Mr. Chairman, so are we, how are we petitioning Mass DOT to change a speed limit when they don't even have one on file, is my question? Are we asking them to finally set a speed limit?
We can. This is all part of your discussion tonight.
But we don't want that. You're telling us that you don't think...
Well, my recommendation, you can do whatever you want with it. My recommendation is that we explore speed zoning over in that area. You might not agree, and that's total, you know, obviously that's fine.
But a lot of these came up, and I, I apologize, but a lot of these came up, to your point, Mr. Chairman, because I read them as well. They, a lot of them say not recorded in Ma, so my question is, why do we, how can we do a speed zone study when there's not even, aren't they gonna ask us what we're changing? They're gonna say we don't even have anything on file.
They're gonna ask us for this, and then we're gonna say Pleasant Street doesn't have anything on file, and they'll come out and do whatever and set the speed limit. Hopefully, we can not go by the averages.
Okay, so that's why you were saying, that was, I think that's why she was concerned, because she said, "Since they don't have something on file, this is how they're gonna set." Okay, now I, it all makes sense, folks. I understand it now.
The other thing I think we need to look at is the Weed Whacker Bill.
Yes.
The original Weed Whacker Bill has a provision that allows communities to set speed limits. And when we first looked into it, when that bill passed, the only thing that we really couldn't do was on a state highway. And so my thought is, what can we, what can we do under the Weed Whacker Bill that we can actually do and enforce?
That's town-wide, to drop it to twenty-five miles an hour. I believe that to be, like, to me, that's not appropriate for a street like William Street or Tremont Street. I don't, I don't believe a one-size-fits-all here, but again, you might disagree.
That, so I guess, to your point, Selectmen Gulart, you're saying that that's our only, that's the only authority that the town has without needing to go through the state?
Right. And we can do stop signs for public, with a public hearing. That's another thing that came out of the Weed Whacker Bill. So here's my thought, because I know you all have absorbed all of this. I don't know if you're ready to make a decision. Perhaps I get more information for you to make a decision, and in the meantime, we amp up enforcement and different things through the police department.
I want to know what Selectmen Gulart thinks about the enforcement part.
Well, I stated months ago, the only way you're gonna do it is to increase the number of police officers we have because we don't have enough police officers on the shifts to be all over this town trying to enforce it. I will say this, within the last week, I've seen a number of cars stopped on the side of the road, at least on the roads I've traveled, so I know that the police are out there. And I don't know if everyone got written up, or all I can tell you is, I saw a vehicle stopped. But enforcement, if, what has happened in the past, even with us trying to get an improvement at the Main Street intersection, it was, you gotta enforce what's there. You gotta enforce what's there. The only way we enforce things is to get more police officers.
I think it's true, if you set a speed limit throughout the town, say that you agree to thirty miles an hour, every street in town is thirty miles an hour, that nobody's gonna be going thirty miles an hour on Main Street. They're gonna go fifty. So they're gonna roll the speed limit. And they gotta go, if you set that through the whole town, they're gonna be speeding all over the place. I mean, they're gonna go the speed limit everywhere. So that, I mean, that, that, I don't think is a...
Is this, is the zoning something you're interested in me exploring a little bit further with more specifics?
I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I don't think that we can do a town-wide twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, so I think that that's probably the best option, is to explore it. But that's, that's just my...
Yeah, but I just wouldn't want it to be Pleasant Street. I would want to consider other areas, too.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I agree with that.
Have, have we contacted DOT at all?
I haven't talked to them about anything, no.
My other thought would be, and obviously, we're not the only community who's faced with this problem, but if we were to say to them, "DOT, what can a community do other than enforcement, which is, we are working on enforcement, we've hired, you know, we've expanded our police department, so, so on, what do you recommend a community do to have better control of traffic?" And quite frankly, there's some type places in our town that we feel are too high already on approved streets, the ones that I've checked off here, that they say that there's something on file. I mean, that would just be another thought. What, give us some advice.
Well, I, and by no means a Mass DOT or a traffic, or a street expert or anything, but in my research, when we had that original hearing with the folks in the Main Street, Pleasant Street area, the only thing I ever saw a town do in regards to the roads was to do the safety or the speed zones. So I don't know if there are any other options. That was the only thing that I found that towns had done to retain the normal speed limits on roads.
Is it possible to get somebody from Mass DOT to come down and speak to some of the people in town?
Don't we have a contact, like Mary Jo Ha, why do I?
Okay, so Mary Jo Perry is the head of, yeah, she's our person for District Five. I don't know if they come down and talk to residents. I don't think so, but...
They have, within their staff, people that do certain things, like I dealt with a bridge person. When we attended the initial pre-construction meetings for all of our bridges, the three that we got, there was an individual who conducts pre-construction meetings, because that person knows they have to get all the utilities to come and talk about the overall plan and how it's gonna move ahead. So I'm sure they have somebody or people who would be traffic people that we could talk to. When we did the Main Street study, I think there's a folder, I'm, I'm sure there's a folder, and there will probably be contact names. If the person is still here, it's been a while. The only thing we were able to do about Main Street, we wanted a, we wanted a light. Even, we would even settle for one that would trip for emergency vehicles, and we didn't get that either, but we did an extensive letter describing all the problems we saw, in addition to the speed limit. Like, there was a broken line going... Like, there was a broken line going into the intersection, meaning you could pass. Well, you're entering an intersection. That could change, there saw the lines down there. They gave us no parking signs where the restaurant is on the corner, and they said, "We'll provide the signs, you install them, and you've gotta enforce them." So there were other things they did. The only thing they wouldn't do is give us the light and lower the speed limit.
So the thing for the light, we can use, we're on the Joint Transportation Committee there, and we can get it on the tip list. And you wait like five years, but it occurs, it happens, finally.
So I would like to hold off on making a decision on this. I would like to check to see if we can get someone from Mass DOT to come down and speak to some of us and figure out what our options are as far as this goes, but I'm not...
I'll look for that.
I do like more enforcement, and I would consider that the town purchase another one of those speed limit things, maybe at the annual town meeting. I think it's worth it.
Yeah, that's right. I think the town administrator brought it, maybe, like in my, sometime, when spring comes along again, let's go forward with that. You know, being winter coming, it's a little tougher than, you know, summertime, but I told her that, so I would look into, by March, maybe, let's try to purchase something like that.
I was surprised that the, so on my commute home, they installed on one of the roads, before South Walker Street, one of those blinking, and it tells you your speed limit. I mean, it's, looks like such a basic contraption.
On Whistler Street, that little short street. Yes, I saw that, too.
Four thousand dollars for that thing? I never would have guessed, never would have, that's...
I couldn't believe it.
Yeah. And all it does is do that little, it tells you your speed, and then it does this, like, white light if you're over whatever the speed limit is? Like, it doesn't actually do anything.
But it catches your attention. Like, a lot of times, it's just you're not aware. You're just not, like, you wanna go the speed limit, you're just not aware. Or it's not posted, maybe a snowplow took out the sign or whatever, and there it is to let you know that you're gonna be there.
Well, thank you both for, for looking into, like, the pricing, everything, like, that was really helpful, I appreciate that.
We wanna take care of this problem, Thomas, this is our concern, this is, like I said, don't worry about it, you know, Dayton, that's no worry about, we need to try to control this somehow. You know, it's not easy, but hopefully, we can start getting going, you know, and try to stop this.
I mean, I'm happy enough just to have a reputation that the cops pull you over in Dayton, right? As you were saying, like, you saw them, and even just in the interim.
Berkeley's had that reputation, too, because of...
Oh, yes.
Right through town, headed for twenty-four, you know?
You go right through, like, that area with the town hall and the fire department, so...
I tell you, the guys, they're doing their job. I can't say, the guys have done a good job, they're out there, you tell them to go, certain spots, they go there, the supervisors tell them, so they're doing the job, they're out there.
I see.
Well, thank you very much for your input and your help on this.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
The next item, I'm just requesting to table until the next meeting. I have a question out to one of the vendors, and I did not receive a response yet, so I'm just looking to table that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table agenda item six B, Police Station God Rail, water Bennett until the next meeting on the twentieth.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
This is the item that we're going to keep on the agenda, whether we have something to say or not. This is the Dayton, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, public. This is the Dayton Elementary slash Dayton Middle School driveway update. Nothing really new since the last time we talked about this, we're still just awaiting those plans. However, that being said, it would be wise for us to just sort of consider how we're going to pay for it and the schedule of work to coincide with summer and not being too invasive for when school's in session, obviously.
Who's coming up with the plans? They have an, the district engineer.
They have the engineer, and so they're paying for engineering services, but when it comes to...
They being the school?
I'm sorry, yes, the district. And then when it comes to construction, that's going to be a different, you know, it'll be a capital expense.
For them.
Charged to us, but yes. That's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Old business, third reading and acceptance of the personal record policy. This is our third reading of it, not actually, literally, third reading, but the third time it's been before us. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the personnel records policy.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work.
Third reading and acceptance of the tobacco use and smoke-free policy. I'll entertain a motion if there's no questions.
Before I make a motion, I do have one question. Why does it say effective date 2016?
This was part of your policy manual, effective date.
Okay.
So I revise, see how it says effective date and then revisions?
Okay, okay.
And then your updated approval date will be tonight.
Okay.
I apologize, that should have been...
No, 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 I understand, thank you. No further questions.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the tobacco and smoke-free workplace policy.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
This policy has an acknowledgement form, and it will be going out to the employees.
The next item is to discuss the request for support of sewage notification bills from Massachusetts River Alliance. And I'm gonna send this over to Dr. Z.
So we talked about this before, and I think everybody gave...
So you're gonna send it this way?
(laughing) Everybody gave, you know...
It was addressed to him, so that's...
Yep, and I, and I just wanted, you know, just for transparency, I wanted to give it to the rest of the board.
Yep.
My personal opinion is, if Selectman Goulart believes, you know, that we're already doing a lot of this in town, she's on the Stormwater Committee and was on the Board of Health for several years, I think I'm okay with that.
I also received...
And she's on the MMA, I'm sorry, Energy Committee, Policy Committee as well.
I also received the email, and so I did get in touch with Ariella Lovett, who chairs our committee. And the position of the MMA is, the bill that's put forth by Mass Rivers Alliance has many good points, however, they have not taken steps to work out details with sewer operators. For example, our sewer operator is the City of Totten. And without that, Mass Rivers Alliance, working with the sewer operators, the processors, the cities, towns that have public sewage, that actually process the waste product, MMA feels like it would be a lopsided support, because we'd be, if we support the Rivers Alliance bill, without considering the impact it would have on municipalities, because there are costs involved. So MMA has basically said, "It's got some good points, you need to work out some details with cities and towns, because we need to know what the cost impact will be for cities and towns," before MMA makes a final decision and makes a statement on whether or not it will fully, fully support it. It was mentioned briefly today and, at the meeting, but nobody was jumping on the bandwagon to run right out and say, "Support this legislation and send a letter," because many of them have their own sewage treatment plants. So if you support Rivers Alliance, you're in effect supporting a bill that's telling your own community thus and so without working out details. So that's, you know, that's how it was left. And I said to Arielle, "Thank you very much, I will let the board know about this tonight." And I said, "My recommendation will be, let's wait and see what happens," because MMA has said, "Let's see what you can do to put this together, come up with a compromise that we can agree on, and we want cost numbers." So that's basically where it was. And as I said before, there are reporting requirements for spills. So it's not like, no one's reporting spills. Dr. Z, you know yourself, you get a heavy rain in Boston, we all hear about the Deer Island plant.
Yeah.
We see it in the subway tunnels if it's bad enough.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, enough said.
I'm not so much concerned with MMA's opinion of it, just myself, I have not had time. All I have read about this is the correspondence they sent us. I have not had time to go and read the actual bill, which is what I think we would all wanna do if we, you know, wanna have an informed vote. So I'm okay with everything Selectman Goulart has said about it.
And I'll keep an eye on this and let you know, whenever I hear anything, I'll bring it back and pass it on, let you know what's happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're not gonna take any action on it?
Do you wanna take, like, a formal?
I don't necessarily know.
You can just...
No, I think if Mrs. Goulart gets any more information, she'll bring it to our attention, we'll put it on the agenda, and we can discuss it further. New business, ratification of the Highway Union Contract and Memorandum of Agreement. Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at it, I assume?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion, then, if there's no discussion.
Is this what we signed last week, or the week?
So now that it's funded by town meeting, you ratify it?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we, I remember reading one document, that we ratify the Highway Union Contract and Memorandum of Agreement, as funded at the special town meeting in October.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Request by the Highway Superintendent to overspend the snow budget. We dealt with this last year, I'm sure you guys dealt with it before that. We can't put a figure on this, I'm sure, because we don't know what snow's gonna be, but I'll entertain a motion to allow him to overspend the budget if needed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
The reason why, over the years, this used to be thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget, and the Finance Committee, when I was still on the Finance Committee, we went to fifty thousand. But the reason we can't go, we, we don't recommend going higher is, if you don't spend it, it's a problem, because you've got that money tied up. So it's better if you give permission to overexpend, because it comes off your cherry sheet.
So it doesn't become free cash, then, if you underspend that money, then? Is that what you're saying?
If you, if you would have set, let's say you set a limit of a hundred thousand dollars, a budget, excuse me, a budget of a hundred thousand. In all the years that I was on the Finance Committee, we only had one year when we did not spend what was in the budget, because it must have rained all winter. But there are rules about, this is the only account by law you can overexpend, and the recommendations were, raise it a little, but don't go too high, because it'll be offset against the cherry sheet, and that's what everybody does. So that's why Mr. Ferry asks for this every single year.
Request by the owner operator for a waiver of workers' comp insurance for fiscal year twenty, snowplow season. So we get a request to waive the workers' comp insurance for this individual. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Review and discuss correspondence received from DESE regarding the school district budget. In addition to that, I guess we got the, from the school committee, figures as to what the assessment should be for the town of Dayton. My personal opinion is that we ought to support the, the assessment with the additional change in the figure that was approved by the town residents last June. We ought to stay with it.
So I'll make a motion that we support the...
Do we, should we have a specific figure, Madam Administrator?
They are just looking for your input, so if you want to say that you support the specific figure, we, as a town, supported the full budget. When I first read this, I really wanted to say that, because I wanted them to know that we, in the town of Dayton, put together a budget that accommodated their full request. And I want, I think, Desi, they know that, but I kinda wanna put it in writing that the town, the voters, accepted that. So they're just looking for our input to make sure that we're good with the one-twelfth budget, which of course we are.
What...
If the one-twelfth budget is based on...
Well, my thought was, I was gonna make a motion without numbers, but to support the action taken at the annual meeting with the town of Dayton in support of operating capital costs for the regional district. And the reason I'm saying that is, my understanding is, come the first of December, the Department Ed is going to set the budget. So we, we don't know that number, and I don't think we ought to vote a specific number. We're just sitting back waiting to find out what the number is.
And that's why I don't...
I think we should just stand by, no, 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 it's okay. I, to your point, Selectman Goulart, I think that it might just be best, in whatever motion is made, we just stand by whatever the original part that Dayton approved.
Approved, and that's why I wanted to, because they do set that, and I didn't want us to pigeonhole, "Yeah, we, we support the one-twelfth budget," because that's not really true. We support the school operating.
We would have supported having a budget by this point.
Exactly.
The only vote this town has taken is what came at our annual town meeting, right? There can be all sorts of numbers thrown out there. And I looked at the assessment, and I thought to myself, "I wonder what this is based on." But in any case, we know there's going to be something coming down the pike. And when that happens, I would assume we're gonna get a new assessment number, because I think it's gonna change. And if it doesn't change, it's the same number, we can just advise the public that we got the new number. But I'm gonna make a motion that we support the action taken by the voters at the annual town meeting in June relative to support of operating and capital costs that were in the budget, in our, in our budget.
Yeah, as outlined, you know, and whatever the warrant was. Yep, I'll second that.
So I'm sorry, because I just, I'm gonna write this email. The BOs, well, the town, supports the action taken by voters at the annual town meeting in June relative to, I missed the last one.
Support of the capital and operating budgets as they appeared on the warrant.
Thank you.
Yes, school district budgets. Yep, I second that.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Because when we did the warrant in preparation, remember we read the warrant, and we voted on warrant articles, we'll support this and support that? Nothing has changed for the town of Dayton that would affect the vote that we took back then. So if the number is going to change, we'll have to take another vote. But in the meantime, as Dr. Z said, we're just gonna sit and wait.
Well, and then, I don't know if anyone recalls, things, so many things have changed, but I believe our assessment was actually lowered, because the transportation costs were changed. I think we got increased aid from the state, so, yeah, I think we should err on the side of caution on this.
We've had a lower, a lower assessment issued three times. I, I actually don't know what the number is, I think you have. I emailed it late this afternoon, you might not have seen it, but I emailed it when I got it today and sent it over to you.
So ours was reduced by sixty thousand, is my understanding, and we hope it was increased sixty thousand. But we're gonna go with the figure that was voted.
But we still know the Department Ed's gonna take action the first of December.
Do something, exactly.
And...
And that'll be that for the year.
Any discuss proposed date for special town meeting?
This is on here, so we have a contract in limbo. And in order to fund it, in my opinion, appropriately, for raising appropriate costs, we would have to have a town meeting ahead of tax classification. Originally, the date for tax classification was supposed to be next week. Some people can't make that, so the assessor has entertained different dates, the latest of which, right now, is December eleventh, meaning we would, if you did agree to have a town meeting to fund that contract, we would have to have that before the eleventh. Timing works out where we would have that on the ninth. However, our moderator is not available that day. He is available the sixteenth, tax classification on the eighteenth of December, but that does not give the assessing department a lot of time to close and set the tax rate. And so we're kind of operating under the gun at that point. So this is on here to get your feedback. What would you like me to do, put together, work on? How do you feel?
I would like to see the contract funded, we're six months almost into, we will be We're six months almost into, we will be almost six months into the year. I would like to see them, I would like to see it funded, so that back pay and thing benefits, whatever is owed, can be paid before Christmas. If we have to, we've gotta meet the schedule for setting the tax rate, because we know the bills come out January first, thereabouts. So we've gotta think of the assessors. I prefer to have our current moderator there, but I have to weigh the other two things. I would like to see these employees get paid, and I would like to try to meet the earliest deadline that we've got for setting the tax rate. And if that means we have to get a substitute moderator, then we're gonna have to do it. I would also hope that this is going to be a limited town meeting to one agenda item, or one warrant article.
One or two, yeah.
One item, it's three articles, but one issue specific.
I think we should, I think, I think we should do it. I think it's the right thing to do. I wish the contract hadn't been in limbo. I wish we had been able to have that as a warrant article on the special town meeting. So I hope that this board will have learned something from that experience.
Don't...
But I'm gonna support it. You can say whatever you want.
Yeah, we have a right to discuss contracts, and if it needs delaying the contract, delaying the contract. I'm not gonna take into consideration, if it was ratified sooner, that we could've had it resolved at the town meeting, the special town meeting that we just had. So that's not my guidance. I do think we ought to have it as soon as possible to get it resolved, but that's not my motivation to approve a contract.
No, and I'm not looking at the date, the time, the time it took to settle it, because I agree with you. Contract negotiations are give and take, you have to go back and forth, you have to get it done. Now that it's done, I just wanna get the funding, I wanna get these employees paid, and get that behind us, get the tax rate set, and we just keep moving on.
So is he able to be our moderator in December, did I get that?
He's not able to attend on December ninth.
On December ninth?
On December ninth.
But other days, if we pick...
December sixteenth. However, that gives not a, it's not fair, quite honestly, to the assessors to try to pull out tax classification like that. It's not a great situation, I wish I had better answers, but...
As I said, I prefer to have our own moderator, however, I'm, that's one issue. I got two others that I got away. Getting this, getting the money to pay this contract, to paying these employees. And so that's, that's a big issue. And then I've got the one about getting the tax rate set. I'm looking, I'm leaning to get two out of three done, which means we would have to get a substitute moderator. And again, a limited, a limited warrant. If other things come up, we could always schedule a meeting later in the year. And I'm hoping this is something we could do at the Old Town Hall, because I don't think we're gonna have people, hordes of people out there
I agree.
on a contract settlement.
If this will be the only thing on the agenda.
Well, you just have the housekeeping thing.
And so if you did decide to do December ninth, the schedule would be next meeting, you would open the warrant, close the warrant, approve the warrant. We'd have to have everything kind of in one shot, taken care of.
And we can get that done?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and open it and closing it is fine, because as I said, I'm really focused on two issues.
We have to do it as fast as possible, so the Finance Committee has an opportunity to meet, make their recommendation.
Clerk's gotta get it posted, we gotta get the word out.
Checkers and all that has to happen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we set December the ninth at seven P M. The Old Town Hall. For a special town meeting.
Is there a second?
Well, that's the end of it? Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Are we, do we select a moderator from the floor at that point?
Can we do that, are we able to?
That's what we used to do in old days, right?
I know what we just did in Reholt, but that's not what we wanna do here.
I know at the Water District, they actually appoint somebody, but it's somebody that they know ahead of time. It's, one time it was the moderator from Berkeley that moderated the Dayton Water District meeting I went two years ago.
Okay.
But yes, we can, we can, somebody will make a motion.
I'll figure that out, okay.
Yeah, we should look into that.
Yeah, it's the first one on my list, yeah. Okay, thank you, so we'll get moving on that. I appreciate that.
Okay, signed, Brook Street Purchase and Sale, Sales Agreement. We've had our attorney look at this, I assume.
He drafted it.
And the sellers have also looked at this. And we made a few tweaks here and there. But basically, what this, all of this says is, what is currently owned on Brook Street is what we are buying, everything.
And this has been approved by the town to purchase this property, so...
Yes, we have the money.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve and sign the purchase and sale agreement with Somerset Power LLC for the purchase of approximately two and one-third acres, more or less, on Brook, on Brook Street, as described in the purchase and sales agreement.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. First reading of the Corey policy.
Oh, there should be two of those. Two signed.
I can print one out quickly after...
I got one right here.
Okay.
Do you want me to read this, I'm sorry? It's like my betica?
What's that, please?
Do you want me to read this?
I wanna read this.
Okay, so made this thirteenth day? You're gonna use today's date, thirteenth day?
Yes, please.
Where's the other one?
Karen Henson. Mrs. Brady.
Where's the rest of it?
Thank you for your work on that, Slak McGulart.
You're welcome.
So this is the first reading of the new Corey policy. The town, the background. Town of Dayton is a certified organization authorized by the Department of Criminal Justice Informational Services in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter Six, Section one seventy-two C. This policy describes the process and procedures through which the town conducts criminal offender record information. Screening as authorized by town regulation for those certified in the Board of Selectmen's Office, including the Executive Assistant and Town Administrator. Purpose and applicability. The Town Administrator and Executive Assistant to the Board of Selectmen are authorized to conduct Corey screenings on the following volunteers, current and prospective employees, subcontractors, interns, professional licensed, licensed and applicants. Corey used for the employment purposes shall be assessed for applicants who are otherwise qualified for the position for which they have applied. The Police Department, Council on Aging and Public Library are excluded from this policy as they operate separately from the Town of Dayton. Corey registration with separate rules and procedures. Policy. One, Corey checks will only be conducted as authorized by D C J I S, D J S, and M G L, Chapter Six, Section one seventy-two C, and only after a Corey acknowledgment form has, should be has been, should be has been completed. All persons who must undergo a Corey screening will be notified that a Corey screening will be conducted and provided a copy of this policy by the appropriate authority. If a new Corey check is to be made on an applicant within a year of his or her signing of the Corey acknowledgment form, the applicant shall be given seventy-two hours' notice that a new Corey check will be conducted. All Corey, two, all Corey obtained from the D J S is confidential, and access to this information must be limited to those individuals who have a need to know. This may include, but not be limited to, hiring managers, staff submitting the Corey request and staff charged with processing job applications. Three, the Town of Dayton, through the Board of Selectmen's Office, shall keep and maintain a current list of each individual authorized to have access to or view Corey. This list must be updated every six months and is subjected to inspection upon request by the D J S at any time. Four, all personnel authorized to review or access Corey screening for the Town of Dayton will review and be thoroughly familiar with the educational and relevant training materials regarding Corey laws and regulations made available by D J S. Five, unless otherwise provided by law, a criminal record will not automatically disqualify an applicant. Rather, determination of suitability based on background checks will be made consistent with this policy and any applicable law or regulation. Six, if a criminal record is received from D J S, the information is to be closely compared with the information on the Corey acknowledgment form and any other identifying information provided by the applicant to assure the record belongs to that, to the applicant. If the information the Corey record provided does not exactly match the identification information provided by the applicant, a determination is to be made by an individual authorized to make such determination based on comparison to Corey record and documents provided by the applicant. Seven, in connection with any decision regarding employment, volunteer opportunities or professional licensing, the applicant shall be provided with a copy of the criminal history record, whether obtained from D J S or from any other source, prior to questioning the applicant about his or her criminal history. The source of the criminal history record is also to be disclosed to the applicant. Eight, if the Town of Dayton reasonably believes the record belongs to the applicant and is accurate based on the information provided by Item Six of this policy, and the applicant does not dispute the record accuracy, then the determination of suitability for the position of or license will be made. The applicant is to be notified of the decision and the basis for it in a timely manner. Unless otherwise provided by law, fact is considered and determiner suitability may include, but not be limited to, A, relevance of the record to the position sought, B, the nature of the work to be performed, C, time since the conviction, D, age of the candidate at the time of the offense, E, seriousness and specific circumstances of the offense, F, the number of offenses, G, whether the applicant has pending charges, H, any relevant evidence of rehabilitation or lack thereof, and I, any other relevant information, including information submitted by the candidate or requested by the organization. Nine, if an authorized official is inclined to make an adverse decision based on the results of a criminal record background check, the applicant will be notified immediately. The applicant shall be provided with a copy of the organization's Corey policy and a copy of the criminal history. The source of the criminal history was also, will also be revealed. The applicant will then be provided with the opportunity to dispute the accuracy of the Corey record. Applicants shall also be provided a copy of D J S information concerning the process for correction, correcting, correction, a criminal record. Yep. Ten, all Corey obtained from the D J S is confidential, can be, only be disseminated as authorized by law and regulation. Any central secondary dissemination log shall be used to record any dissemination of Corey outside this organization, including dissemination at the request of the applicant.
I do have to, I'm still checking into something about the fire department. He's verifying the procedures they use, if they are different or they have their special policies, like these other areas of the town. The fire department would also be exempt from the policy, so it's the only change. I was hoping to streamline, I didn't realize.
So this is not revision, this is something new? This is not...
This is new, yeah, for us, for our, our side here.
How long is a Corey check good for? Assuming it comes back and everything's okay? Are they...
Like, how often can you redo it? I think three years.
Okay, and are they transferable?
What do you mean transfer, like to, to a different department?
Well, for example, if I wanted to teach CCD, I gotta be Corey checked.
Yes.
And if I had one on file with the Town of Dayton, could I get a copy of that?
So, um, I don't know, because that person conducting it for CCD is not supposed to share anything with somebody outside their organization. If you provided your own, maybe, but where we have the ability to do a Corey on, there's no benefit for us to get one provided by the individual.
When I ask transferable, if I had one on file at the town and wanted to teach CCD, which I'm not intending to do, they require Corey checks, and so my question would be, assuming it's relatively new, could I get a photo of it? Is it transferable? They would have to do their own?
Well, if you requested it from me, like if I had it on file and you requested it, you have the right, because it's your Corey. But I cannot share it with an outside organization, so you could do it.
So if you gave me, so if everything's cool, and I say, could I get a copy of that, because I'm, I need one?
You're entitled to it.
And so you give me a copy, and if they would accept it, then I'm all set. If they say, no, we do our own, then they'd have to do their own, correct?
They probably would say that.
I think we have to be careful about handing out criminal records. I worked for probation for thirty-five years, we were the ones that put the information in when somebody was brought before the court. Say Brett was on probation, he was never on probation. Actually, I haven't done a Corey check, so I'm not sure about that, but anyway.
I pass.
As far as I know. So if he came in and asked for his record, asked me for his record, I could not give him a copy of the record. He would have to contact Boston. I could have the record in front of me, I can show it to him, I can hand it to the judge, I can't give him a copy. He can say that it's my record, it's not.
He'd have to go get his individual, that's absolutely right, that's right.
So I just think we gotta be careful handing out records.
But if there was a, something that came up, that's right, I have to provide you, if something came up, I have to provide you a copy of that, and sit down with you and verify that it's you.
Okay, but I was just, I was just, I was just wondering.
Once it exits the organization, that's a problem. Like, that's, that's not something you want to happen. Like, once it walks outside, that's...
But I have the right to have a copy of mine, correct?
You can, I'm not sure, she can on her own...
You can get your own Corey.
You can on your own, get your own record, if you contact the...
I could do a Corey check on myself?
On yourself, anybody can now do a Corey check on anybody else. It's just the amount, like, as a probation officer, you, well, you entered, it's a bad example, but like, different level, different agencies have different levels of access. So we get a little bit more than the average person.
Okay.
You know, agencies get a little bit more than what we get. It all depends on what purpose you're accessing the Corey for.
If somebody has the record sealed, for example, the Police Department still gets a look at that record, the complete record, because you can actually have a drunk driving sealed, but the Police Department needs to know, if you've been arrested for drunk driving, they need to know whether that's your first, second or third.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't necessarily see that, but the Police Department and the prosecution would have access to that.
Oh, okay, okay.
And this, this is not, this is not national record, this is just, their record in Massachusetts, and it's not verified by fingerprints, so...
I just wondered, because there are signs posted in the classroom wing of the Paris Center that say, unless, something like Corey check, you must be Corey checked to enter this area with children present, or some, some such thing.
I volunteered for my son's school, I had to be Corey checked. Vulnerable populations, anybody with access to vulnerable population.
The next item is review and approve ADA Coordinator posting. Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at what was presented to us regarding the posting?
This job description, I apologize, I usually say when it was approved, this was previously approved. The job description.
Yep.
Yeah, the job description.
And this comes right from the description, correct?
Essentially, and then I like make up a date of when things are due, we change that around.
So what do we need to act on, the posting?
Yes.
How did you, I'm sorry.
No, you can ask the question.
Yeah, was the two years' experience working with members of the disabled community, so, okay, maybe the public isn't reading this, so that is one of the qualifications that was drafted, that we would want to see in a candidate? Is that based on, like, other towns' postings?
No, it just, under our, under our approved job description, it says must have demonstrated experience. I threw out two as a, just a general thing.
Okay.
If you want more or less, that's totally up to you. I just threw out, I like two years, I don't know why. I have really no reason for that, just that I like it.
I think it was smart to put in the grant writing experience as well.
Yes. And I also made reference to us, you know, I wanted this person to know what is really ahead of them. So I made reference to our transition plan and evaluation, self-evaluation project.
Where will this get posted?
Our normal spots, so we normally do the bulletin board, I post it on our website, I post it on Face, like, I share it on Facebook. We can do MMA, I don't think this warrants that.
Speaking of that, did anyone see the latest MMA? There was, there was, one community, I think, had seven ads for various positions.
The Hanson?
Sargus.
For Sargus.
Not only that, it's been, it's been in there, but, but that community has been in there before. And I'm looking at these thinking, the people you hired left? There's six or seven.
Maybe they just have really high standards.
So do we need to vote on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the job posting for the position of ADA Coordinator as prepared.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Will you also just specify what the, what the rate will be?
Sure.
I'd like to just add...
Friendly amendment, up to ten hours per month, what was the rate?
We had budgeted, we just threw out twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay.
That I don't know.
At a rate, okay, that's, that's fine.
So when I suggested we put this on the warrant and we have a budget, it was up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars... it was up to two hundred fifty dollars a month, ten hours, at the rate of twenty-five dollars.
Okay, so I'm gonna amend my motion for the approval of the ADA coordinator job posting to, for up to ten hours per month at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. Sorry, Karen.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I do have one question for you, Chairman.
Regarding the motion?
No, no, it's just for general knowledge. Is, are, was the grant that you and ADA coordinator Gail and the town administrator applied to for funding for a self-evaluation and transition, transition plan?
Yes, it's to hire somebody to come in, or some organization to come in and do an evaluation of all of our town buildings.
Okay, I wasn't sure if, like, we, the town, are writing the transition plan?
No, no. We will look at the transition plan, because we'll decide the process, you know. Whatever they did, I'm sure we're, we're not ADA compliant in a lot of places, but we're not going to fix this all next year. So it's gonna, we're gonna come up with a plan. The board will make that call.
Well, I think that's good.
I just wanna verify that we're good with the December five due date. Okay, and who would be conducting interviews? Is everybody coming in here, or, what, what do you want to do?
I was gonna-
Do you want me to give my opinion?
Yeah, sure.
Well, my opinion would be, I would assume that the current ADA coordinator would not be, like, in on the interview. So I would like Jeremy Pacheco, if you're available and you want to, to be in on there, because he's been working on that, that's part of his five-year wish list. And then obviously, if you have time, Madam Administrator, you as well.
I would want the town administrator to be part of it.
And anyone else you guys, you folks, excuse me, think is appropriate? But that's who I would like to see.
Okay, so that's what's gonna happen, all right.
I was just, just waiting.
Great. We might add Karen. Karen asks great questions, she asks really good questions.
Okay.
Do you want Karen to be a part of it?
I like three, because in the event of a tie, there's a tiebreaker, but we'll see, we'll see how her schedule is as well.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. The next item is to review the Board of Selectmen's proposed schedule of meetings, January through June of 2020. Is there any dates on this schedule that's gonna be a problem for interview, right now anyway? I know-
Not that I know of.
I don't see anything. I, I'm sort of planning a vacation for the summer, but I will plan around whatever the schedule is, I will do my best to do that.
I was also kind of toying with the June third, 2020 town meeting date. I don't know.
I felt like we already didn't, what is June eighth, is that a Monday?
Second Monday, it's the second Monday in June.
Don't we usually do the, why are we not doing June first?
I didn't do the first Monday, because I thought that it was like, I don't know, we didn't have a meeting right away. I, I just get kinda nervous about not having a Wednesday meeting, I'm a nut, but a Wednesday meeting before the town meeting. But I, that's why I wanted to throw this out here now, June third.
Of course, well, you wrote potential. I think my one change that I would like to see, and it's not really even anyone's fault, a cause of anyone, is I would like to see the potential town meeting date be June first. I think people have-
June third, right, well, the first, the first Monday.
The first Monday. It's not June first?
Oh, my God, it is June first.
It is, yeah, because I'm like, I'm subtracting seven.
Why am I saying June third?
It's okay, it's okay.
But this is, this is only, the key word is potential. So it could be the eighth, it could be the first.
I just have had folks who don't even really follow our meetings, who have mentioned that they, you know, oh, is the town meeting still the first week of June? So I think people come to expect that that's when it is. But other than that, I had no issues.
So I'll entertain a motion, if everybody's okay with, obviously, things may change, and we'll, we'll address it as they come up.
I do have one question for whoever on the board, or the, if the town administrator or Mrs. Brady can answer. Are we sure that this disclaimer at the bottom is accurate, that the town clerks and town treasurer collectors offices are open when we're here? I'm not entirely sure that that's true.
In theory, that is what they say, that they are here when we are here.
But I've seen them be here on an off week.
Yes, in practice, it's changed. I actually, I'm gearing up for another set of recommendations, and in them, I'm going to request that we extend hours for the entire town hall on Wednesday evenings, to sort of curb this problem.
I just wanna be clear, I'm not, I'm not making, I, I'm not saying this to make an issue. What I'm saying is I want this to be accurate, so that when people look at it and come here for a service, they're really, it is gonna be open.
So this is, this is, in theory, accurate. What happens is we throw out, we're like, oh, we have a special meeting. Well, then people get confused. Then it's like, okay, well, they meet every other week. So these are the dates that they have sort of committed, that they'll be here. Sometimes it's, people don't check, like, I've been here on Fridays, and people are trying to come in.
If they see a car, they'll do that.
Just one car, just one car, so it's-
That's why I walk here on Fridays. No, no, I do express your concerns also. For example, next week is not a typical meeting, and we're not even meeting here, so-
Are they gonna be here?
Are they gonna be here?
No, they're, they're-
Yeah, because they-
Oh, I'm sorry, because we're not in the building.
Yeah, we're gonna be at Old Town Hall next week.
So yes, they're, they are concerned about that, that they're gonna be here.
If they're not here, they're gonna be here the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I'm sure they don't wanna do that. We should also have the assessors office listed here, correct?
They, she, they, excuse me, yeah, they follow our meetings as a part of it.
But they're meeting, I thought. They're not open for business, they, they have their meeting. This is why I have, like, philosophically, an issue with our hours. Like, if we're open for town hall, like, we all should be open. We should all be here, for anybody who needs us. So it, that's just a to be continued thing.
But I think that raises other issues.
Lots of issues, yeah.
Okay, we'll have to think about that.
But I, I thought, I know they have their meeting, but I think if, the only time you can come is on that evening. I think they will, you can do business in there.
I hope so, I was just always told that they're meeting.
They're having an evening meeting, for people, to accommodate people.
I'm not sure, and I haven't spoken to her about it, so I don't, I don't wanna say. But I can, and I will add her if that is the case.
Okay.
We haven't voted on this yet.
Yeah, and I, I'm satisfied with it. But we are gonna change-
Change in June first.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anyone have any, do you all agree that it should be the first Monday of June, potentially?
Potentially, we'll, we'll have to see.
I don't think we should cast that one in stone.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm gonna keep that potential there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the proposed schedule of meetings and important dates for the first half of 2020 as prepared tonight, with the one amendment being the potential town, potential town meeting date changing to June first, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Accept the resignation of Jason Quinn.
I'm upset about this, Mr. Chairman.
I'm upset about this too.
But I understand.
Yes.
Do we have, how many vacancies do we have in the ZBA?
This would be the first.
This is one.
Oh, they had a full board, okay.
So we got a, a letter from Jason Quinn, a member of the Dayton ZBA. I would like to submit my resignation from, from the Dayton ZBA of Appeals, effective October 23rd, 2019. I've had a great opportunity over the last four years to learn a lot about this wonderful little town and its operations from the inside. Learning from Peter Karen, Selectman Pacheco, Bob Adams, Greg Logan, and many more has been an awesome experience, and I have enjoyed every minute of it. Special thanks to Selectman Dr. Sir Grafus for urging me to apply for the ZBA four years ago. It was a great experience.
He means strong-arming, Mr. Chairman.
When I did interview him for the ZBA, he did mention your name, so I, I knew he came with-
That I had strong-armed him, no.
I realize that now is not the most convenient time for this, but after some careful consideration and discussion with my wife and family, I need to step away to focus on family work, family, work, coaching, and my water district responsibilities. Sometimes I wish there was thirty-two hours in a day and ten days in a week. I'm like, I wouldn't go that far, Jason.
How many days are weekends?
How long is a year?
Keep up the good work, everyone. Continue to make strides and make Dayton even better than it is now. Should you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. So I worked with, were you on the board at that time? You were already, you were Selectman.
He was in, yeah, that's it.
But I had an opportunity to work with Jason while I was on the ZBA, and I was always impressed with his knowledge of the field of construction and developments. And I can honestly say that he's gonna be sadly missed from the ZBA, and I've always loved your input on any discussion we had, whether it was the fortyBs or whatever. So the town has lost a valuable person on that, that board. So now we have an opening for the ZBA. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Jason Quinn from the CBA.
Before I make a motion, and I will, Mr. Chairman, I did just wanna say, when I was elected, so I was first on the zoning board. When I was elected as a selectman in 2016, I urged Mr. Quinn to join the zoning board. And part of the reason I did was because I knew that I had a lot of learning to do on the zoning board, because I'm not familiar with construction. I mean, people are not born innately with zoning bylaws in their, in their brains, unfortunately.
I was, but that's-
And I just really thought he would bring a different experience to the board, not so much a town, an experience that's town-focused, but more like the other side of the table, being in construction. I always joke around, I, I've had some tough talk for developers, but Quinn is a developer that, he's just a good person, and we're very fortunate, I think you know this as well, Mr. Chairman, because you've worked with him, to have him serve the town in any capacity. So for folks who are watching, he's still, he was elected to the Water Commission, so he's helping us, still helping the town in many different capacities, and we're very fortunate for his service, and we thank you for all you do, Mr. Quinn.
It's always nice when he, I believe when he was appointed to the ZBA, he'd only lived in town for maybe about a year. So it's always nice when somebody moves into town and say, I really like this community, I wanna contribute in some way, and he did that, and now he's with-
Wasn't he on open space?
No.
No, but FortyB, FortyB Committee, as a ZBA representative. Green communities.
And green communities. Yep, he was on there from the beginning.
Is that the one he served with Chris Chantinay?
Yes.
Okay, I know they served together.
He's worn many hats in these three, four years.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept with thanks and regret the resignation of Mr. Jason Quinn from the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Sorry to see you go, Jason. The next item is to discuss, discussion of Town of Dayton employees' holiday party. So is this, are we thinking of similar to what we did last year? I believe that we had something at Old Town Hall.
We did.
Yeah, I could not, I have to admit, so I had asked for this to be on the agenda. I unfortunately did not attend last year's holiday party, but I did speak to Mallory about it, excuse me, town administrator, about it, and I saw the pictures that were posted on the town's Facebook page from the holiday party that was held at Old Town Hall, I believe. And it looked like a nice event, and I think that it might be nice to try to do it again, and, and I'd like to take the day off and, and be able to, to attend this time, so.
Well, if you, if you want not to take the day off, that's okay, we just need your money. We're gonna need your money, so.
You have my money.
It's not the spirit.
Sounds like the kids have to call him.
This sounds like Scrooge speaking, Selectman Scrooge.
Are we, are we thinking of a date? Do we wanna set a date now, or just agree to have the party, then what's ever convenient for, obviously, the town employees?
The last time we did this, we had it on, I think, the second Thursday.
It was a Thursday.
I believe it was the second Thursday of the month. I feel sad about Thursdays, because I know Mr. Hershey cannot attend. And we did close town operations for about two hours that day, so that everybody could attend if they so chose.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask a dumb question now.
It's not, never a dumb question.
I was not there. Why does it have to be on a Thursday?
It doesn't, that's why I bring it up.
I feel like we might be able to change, why can't we change the day? I would love Mr. Hershey to be there. We all got to spend the Veterans Day breakfast with him and our veterans, and I would love to see him there.
He can still attend on a Thursday if he doesn't have other commitments. He doesn't have to be physically in his office.
Yeah, but he also works for Berkeley. So maybe the eleventh of Wednesday, it's also one of our meetings, so if you're gonna take the day off, it might be easier for you.
That's what I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so I'm okay with, with the seminar. Mrs. School, are you?
I don't-
I don't know, I-
Get that call.
Oh, the eleventh? Is that the second Wednesday?
It's the second Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, the second Wednesday.
Probably be, if, well, we still don't know if we're gonna have a Wednesday, we don't know if we're gonna have a December meeting, but if we do, that's MMA.
Well, are they gonna have a Christmas party for you?
I didn't.
I'm already picturing the things we can do at this party. We're gonna bring out the Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
So I was the only one that came in a ugly sweater, I thought there were people that were like-
We can bring out the Christmas tree.
My, my granddaughter for our Christmas party, she's asked all of us to commit to wearing a-
An ugly sweater?
Ugly sweater, so now we're all in the process, and that's, I probably have some already.
I was just gonna say, are you having to go and get one?
That's like a, like a fireplace, and it lights.
I've always wanted one with, like, Christmas lights that go on.
When are our, when's our Board of Selectmen meeting in December?
Eleven and eighteen.
Yeah.
Oh, we got them two together?
Yes.
Okay.
We doing that for two months in a row?
I'm okay with the 25th, if you wanna have the, the meeting on the 25th.
I'm not.
The morning.
The only thing, the-
Will Santa have-
December the fourth, we have our MVP thing.
Yes.
That's our next big meeting. And the alternate date is the fifth, the Thursday, if we get a storm. All I can say is the eleventh, it's contingent on MMA for me, that would be the only thing.
How about a Tuesday?
I got Tuesdays open.
It's because of the meeting, right?
I just thought it'd be convenient for-
No, I can, I will work from home or, or take the day off, so.
Or we could do the eighteenth.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I don't have anything down then.
Do you think too close to the holiday?
It's close, but I-
Last year was within a few days of the holiday.
Yeah, and it's a Wednesday. This town's really great about people being here on Wednesdays, because that's where a lot of the meetings are, like, Wednesday, people are really here.
Okay, I think that sounds good.
So are we setting it, and are you interested in closing town operations for a couple hours?
I would like to close it for two hours. Give everybody an opportunity to-
Open at, um-
Yeah, and what they did was, they staggered to the departments, actually, the departments weren't shut down, totally. There were people there, they just took turns coming over to the Old Town Hall. Like, there were people at prime time.
Yes, that's right, they did take turns.
They, they staggered it, the street department came in a few at a time. They staggered it, the street department came in a few at a time.
Yep, okay, so are we closing the two town halls?
Aren't we going to have it at Old Town Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what we did last year is we closed this building, and we closed Old Town Hall. We were upstairs, obviously, Alice and Sheila and Bella rotated in because of prime time.
Yep.
And so, we basically just offered them admin time in exchange.
And it worked?
It did, it worked really well.
Like everyone was, there were no complaints, everyone was happy?
It was very well attended, yeah.
Okay.
It was fun, it was a nice time. So, I think we opened at 10:00, we had a delayed opening, and we opened at 10:00.
I think that's what it was.
Right, okay. Okay, so 12:18.
You're going to figure out, or someone's going to figure out, the numbers of people that we anticipate, so we have the food and all that kind of stuff.
We're going to have to ask ahead of time, give us a head count.
Yep, we asked it to RSVP, and we're sticking with breakfast.
Ooh, I love that.
I was, we have like some really good bakers on our staff, and I was playing with the idea of doing like a Christmas or holiday cookie contest.
Library does have a cookie thing.
Is this a potluck?
It wasn't a potluck last year, but we could make it a potluck.
Oh, we got a kid, okay.
Last year it was Alice's.
You don't want to eat anything I leave.
And it was delicious. But we, I have an idea about a holiday cookie contest.
I like that.
You're right, the library is doing something.
Do they have a cookie swap or something every year?
Yep.
The library does.
For the public?
Anybody that wants to participate.
I like that. Okay, so 12:18, holiday party, all right, Karen and I will get going on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll help with the.
I'll get my lasada.
That was a big hit. It always is.
I approve that, vote on that.
Vote on it.
You're unanimous.
So moved, yeah. All right, thank you.
I think I missed out on it, if I remember correctly, I was too late.
Ah.
Well, this year, I'll get a few more, but I'll also have a secret supply.
Hide some in your bag for me.
So, let's just keep that amongst ourselves, then, okay? Let's not tell anybody it's just going to be a secret stash.
We'll have cable edit this out.
Why is everybody leaving? Nope, nothing to see here.
Okay, on the Selectmen's Report, so each member of the Board of Selectmen have come up with a five-year plan, and on a quarterly basis, we discuss what we've done so far in our plans. We should have done this in October, we got delayed a little bit, so it's November, so our next one will be January, even though it's less than three months away, but it'll be towards the end of January. So, I'll start off, start off with mine, it's been changed a little bit, but the original one that I presented on October 23rd is regarding the two issues that I'm interested in for my five-year plan. First one is a new library. We are still on the waiting list for the renovations of the Andrew Carnegie Public Library, we are number 14 on the list, and met with the library trustees in August at their monthly meeting. We discussed several options available to the town. Presently, the plan is to renovate our current library, I prefer a new library, believing that it would be cost-effective and provide a better library, parking, one floor, et cetera. We discussed the possibility of having public carers to get input from the public as to what their wishes are. We are hoping for some financial assistance from the state to provide funds to help design a new library. And I've presented to board members our list, where we are on the list for a new library, and what some of those grants that have been approved already. My second item is making town buildings ADA compliant. Working with our ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gale and Town Administrator Mallory Aristine, we distributed to all town departments new ADA forms to post in all town buildings. We attended a conference in East Bridgewater achieving accessibility in your community on October 3rd. This discussion was focused on ensuring that our streets and sidewalks have no barriers. This conference will be helpful when we apply for a grant next year, so it's our anticipation that next year we'll be applying for another grant. On October 7th, we submitted an application for a self-evaluation grant to assist the town in removing barriers and proving the accessibility to all of our town buildings. If granted, these funds will pay for a consultant to review all of our town buildings and provide us with a blueprint to move forward with these recommended improvements. These improvements will not happen overnight, but will be part of our five-year plan. If approved by the town, I should add, let me just read, but I put in the initial, which is part of the record, if approved by the town, we will be forming an ADA commission, and we'll be seeking volunteers. I want to thank Jonathan Gale and Town Administrator Mallory Aristine for all of their help. So, the town did approve the position of ADA Coordinator for the town, and you heard us talk earlier about posting that position, and we've also going to be forming an ADA commission, we'll probably wait till we hire an ADA Coordinator and start discussing further the ADA commission as to what the requirements are going to be. So, that's my five-year update, plan update.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, something occurred to me when you were reading your five-year plan. I think this is a really timely goal, because I'm thinking, a lot of our plans are, we need to move the highway garage, we need a new library, there are things that we know that we need, and we can already make them ADA compliant, we already, we already need these things, we're already going to address them, so I think that's great, fabulous.
Thank you.
Very timely.
Who wants to go next?
I'll go next. Below is the quarterly update on two projects for our five-year plan. The first one, Town Hall renovations and reallocation of space progress. The Zoning Board of Appeals was moved to the lower level of Town Hall and shares an office with the Planning Board. The lower-level meeting room, as most of you know, and I hope the public has gotten to see, the Building Commissioner has completed, with assistance, of course, the renovations and the updates, they're all completed, and there's a nice new carpet down there, I really actually really like the design of it. There's also new lighting, which, when I was down there, I felt like, I didn't realize how dimly lit it was down there before, and the Cable Committee is seeking funding at an upcoming town meeting to improve recording capabilities. Did they procure those funds at the last special town meeting in October, or are they going to come to the annual?
They got it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It was on October 28th.
Okay, cool, yes, this was prepared by our Town Administrator on the 23rd, so before. Once work on the animal shelter is completed, and I'm not sure how many folks are aware, we got some sort of partial funding from the state through Senator Mark Pacheco's office for the animal shelter. That has always been worked on, so I know we don't talk about it every meeting, but there was always work going on there between the Highway Department and the Building Commissioner, and once that work is completed, the Building Commissioner will schedule the work to the lower level of Town Hall, and so what's going to happen there is, the Sewer Department, there's a wall that will be built that's going to divide the current space in half, and the doorway to the Sewer Department will be relocated off the hallway instead of that inside door. The other half of the current Sewer Department is going to become a new office, space for planning and zoning. Carpet will be replaced, and the doorway will be off of the hallway. Upon completion, the current planning zoning office will be updated with new carpet and paint, and the Accounting Department will be moved to that space, which I think, again, fabulous idea. This will begin the minor renovations to the main floor of Town Hall, mainly carpet replacement, paint, and moving offices for reallocation of space for the Treasurer Collector and Clerk's offices, which I think we all know are the most, I don't know, cramped.
Cramped.
Expansion of sewer services, this is another one of my goals. The town did begin work with Woodward and Curran, the kickoff meeting was held in August, and so they're going to be doing the study. They're reviewing water usage, compiling data from Somerset, as well as the Dayton Water District. A meeting is anticipated for November. The submission of a first draft of the feasibility study report is scheduled for December 2019, so more to come on that, and thank you again, Mallory Administrator. Thank you.
Okay, and the five-year list for the departments that I'm working with, Fire and Highway, are as follows. This was all based on information supplied to me by Chief McGee and Superintendent Ferry. And this also has some updated information. The Fire Department and the Highway Department both list as their first priority, the townwide fuel depot, and we have had some work done by Weston and Sampson on this, and they're getting some information together, we've got to sit down and review it and come up with some kind of information, costs and things like that. Back to the Fire Department, he had on his list originally the wage scale for call personnel. This is already in place, so that's, we can check that one off. Next is the addition renovation to Station 1. At this point, we don't have an idea of cost, it's really going to depend the scope of work, but we need to come up with a, we need to meet with Mr. Aguirre, really, to start talking about this, and also so that the chief can contact other fire departments to see what it is, he has a general idea of what he wants, but get some more detailed information there. Replacement of Car 3, that was approved at the special town meeting, and he's just waiting for the delivery. Left on the list is replacement of Ladder 1, which has a price tag of approximately a million dollars. Replacement of Engine 3, which is approximately $500,000. Replacement of Forestry 2, approximate cost, $68,000. And long-range, he would like to hire more full-time personnel. Now, the Highway Department, what we know is that at the list that we had before, at the special town meeting in October, the pickup truck of $50,000 was approved, and the large area mower, $55,000, those were approved. The new street sweeper, on here it's estimated at $250,000, it was on the warrant for $230, but there was no action taken on that, so that's still on the list. He needs a bucket tree truck, and he's willing to look at new or used equipment. A dump truck, new or used, a catch basin truck, new or used, a new facility for the Highway Department, Department of Public Works, and that, again, is part of something Weston and Sampson is working on for us. A utility trailer, new or used, and a new small mower, zero-turn type with a collection, meaning a bagger. This is the mower that you might often see right around Town Hall, that's on the front lawn, that's kind of sloped and all that, but it's one of, it's the smaller mower. So, these are the things that are on the two departments, and the, I would think the next step as far as, since we have the fuel depot and the Highway Department building, Weston and Sampson working on those, the next thing, as far as construction goes, we need to meet with Mr. Aguirre and get the ball rolling on what needs to be done to Station 1. Mr. Ferry did add those other items, but he did mark them as new or used. He realized that not everything's, that he needs, there may be funding for, but I know the catch basin truck we have was one we bought from the company that used to do our contracted cleaning, so maybe we can pick up a used one there, but that's where we are with our program.
Thank you, thank you for that report, thank both of you. Correspondents, correspondents.
Mr. Chairman, before we go there, I have a couple of other things. The other thing that came out of today's MMA meeting, and I will forward this to you, we had, we have two resolutions that are proposed, and they deal with the dark skies illumination and replacement of lights to save energy on streetlights, and I don't know if down the road this is something this board might discuss with the Dayton Electric Light District and the North Dayton Fire District, relative to replacing lights where they need to be done, but there are a number of communities that have saved a substantial amount of money. And also, they've come out, the Dark Sky Society's come out with a recommendation that the Kelvins not be higher than 3,000, so that's a whole bunch of information that I can forward to. I wanted to mention, I was at the Arts Festival, as you were, a great event, I think we must have had a record turnout, as far as the number of people that were there. All I know is my stormwater stuff was gone shortly after noon time, last year I had leftovers. This year, I was picked clean, so that was, I was very happy. People were very receptive, I gave out children's puzzles and things that we had, so that was nice. And the other thing I wanted to mention, last night was the KCB LLC, this is the grow facility that wants to move into the Mo Ho Mill, there was a hearing in this building. I think there were only three residents present, the other people, other than the presenters, were town officials. And I got my question answered, yes, they will be, the proposal is to have traffic off of Wannableavod, not off of Spring Street. One lady who lives west of the mill, her concern was dust and noise, because she's experienced that from the current manufacturing operation that's moving down to the Swanks Building. And they addressed that, and we talked about disposal of waste, security, they had a whole presentation. So, it lasted about 30 minutes, and I did make it over to the library to see that presentation on serial killers. That was interesting, and that was a, there was a relatively pretty good-sized group in there, so that went very, very well.
It's a little scary.
I know, I was just thinking, that's what draws people out.
I do want to make one suggestion, you might want to forward the dark skies information to the Electric Light District. I don't know what they're doing, but the last time I spoke to a couple of the members on that, on the Electric Light District, they were thinking about LED, but it was just, it was a thought, it was, maybe we should do this, so.
The only other thing I have here, Mr. Pacheco had mentioned to me, back before the special town meeting, I was on the Community Corner interview program with Mrs. Santos, and we had a discussion about retirement benefits and OPEB and all that good stuff. I was able to get information on the Bristol County Retirement System, and I just want to pass this out to all of you, so you can see, Bristol County is the system that we have for all of our employees, and I will just say that I had thought it was going to be fully funded by 2024, it's actually 2028, but from all of this data, I remarked about what an excellent system it is, how well it is run, and that's, this is a summary, I got in touch with the Mass State Retirees Organization, and they emailed the site to me, so I just printed this so that as Selectmen, you can see the position that our retirement system is in, which is, this is not OPEB, this is the actual retirement system, and how well Bristol County has done in managing it and funding it to meet their long-term obligations, so it's a sound system.
No, I appreciate it, I didn't get to see everything that you said at the, on cable, I caught this part of it, though, and I was impressed with it, I learned something from listening to you, your understanding of this, so I appreciate it, I appreciate you giving us a copy of this.
Yeah, this is, this is really good. Some people confuse OPEB with retirement, and I mentioned that, I'm going to send a copy to Mrs. Santos, too, so she can see this.
She'll be at our next meeting, hopefully, at Town Astoria, and talking about the Old Town Hall.
Yep.
So, I've invited her, she'll be the first item on the agenda, and she'll give a little talk on the, it's 150-year anniversary of the opening of the Old Town Hall.
That day?
That, this month, November.
Wow.
I don't know the date, maybe Mrs. Santos knows the date. So, when it opened up, it wasn't called Old Town Hall, we call it Old Town Hall now, just for clarification. Correspondents, correspondents from Comcast regarding the Internet Essentials Program. If you don't mind, I want to ask that the clerk read the correspondence, if you don't mind, you want it, is it easy if I just give you, that's what you want to?
Yeah, no, it's here.
Yeah.
Thank you, though. This is from Comcast regarding some Internet Essentials. I'm just going to look for the highlights. They wanted to share the latest news about this new thing they're launching called Internet Essentials. They're expanding eligibility for this program to include all qualified low-income households in the service area. It provides high-speed internet service for $9.95 a month, plus tax, the option to purchase a desktop or laptop computer for $149.99, and access free digital literacy training in print, online, and in person. Individuals may qualify if you have at least one child who's eligible for the National School Lunch Program, or if you receive public assistance through such programs as housing assistance, Medicaid, SNAP, SSI, and others. If you wish to apply, please call 855-8INTERNET, and that's 855-846-38376, again, 855-846-8376, or online at internetessentials.com, which is kind of weird, because they're offering internet, so how would you get online if you didn't already have it?
Your library.
Library.
Correct. That was a plug for you. Okay, if you have any additional questions, or you're interested in ordering materials, which are free, please contact them directly at ned underscore New England Community Partners at cable dot Comcast dot com, or online, again, at internetessentials dot com forward slash partner.
And people are also eligible if they have a disability, so perhaps we can send this to our ADA Coordinator, copy of this, so.
Oh, I did, I caught that, yeah.
Yep, so, that's helpful. Thank you for reading that.
Thank you.
There are no acknowledgements, the minutes, I'll entertain motions to accept or review the minutes of October 23rd, October 28th, and October 30th.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it, we have been provided copies of that, and I also will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, Board of Selectmen's meeting on October 9th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Announcements, this is from the Board of Health, mosquito information update. Please be advised that the National Weather Service has recorded the temperature for November 4th, 2019, showing 28 degrees or below for six hours, full range was 24 to 28 over the six hours. This exceeds the required four-hour hot frost, ending the threat of mosquito-borne disease for the season. So, they initially had this warning, and now they've recalled the warning, as we know, this has seriously affected some people in Massachusetts and related states, and some people have died from this, so it's good to, not that we like a hot frost, but it's good to know that the mosquitoes are gone, for the moment, anyway.
But the one thing I will mention is, I saw a program on television, they were talking about, maybe we'll be on the season for Western Isle and Triple E, but they were cautioning individuals because of the prevalence of deer. Deer ticks don't die off in the winter, you can still get bites and get infected, so... we're not out of the, we're not out of the woods, in plain English, on these.
The next announcement is the Regional Shine, serving health information needs of everyone. Coordinator Lisa Sakis will be at the Dyton Council on Agent 300 Leaking Avenue, North Dyton, Mass. On Thursday, November 14th, at 10:00 a.m. to discuss annual open enrollment, that's tomorrow, for Medicare Part D, which occurs October 15th through December 7th.
That's the prescription drug component?
Part D, yes. That's, I'm correcting that, yes. Why are you looking at us when you ask that question?
Okay, so let me ask this. Does anybody know if all of Medicare, all the parts of Medicare are open enrollment? Not that this even matters, but is it all annual enrollment at the same time for all the different parts?
Right now?
Yeah. October 15th through the 7th?
No, because Medicare, you apply for when you turn 66, so it's one application you're eligible or not eligible. Most people are eligible. Part D is a little different. You may have supplemental insurance that may cover some of that, so.
Yeah, this is basically the prescription.
Okay.
As you get closer to that age, we'll.
Thank you. Give me a brochure.
Isn't our local coordinator Nancy Pinto for the Shine program?
Local, yes.
Yes, yeah, because she's been commended for doing a good job.
Okay, as mentioned earlier, our next Board of Selectmen's meeting is December, excuse me, November 20th. It will be held at Old Town Hall at 7:00 o'clock. It will not be taped live. It will be taped, but it won't be shown live on Comcast. But it will be uploaded to YouTube, and it will also be on cable eventually. The Dyton Lights on, Dyton Holiday Committee on Lights on Event will be held on November 30th, 2019, at Town Hall, beginning at 3:30 p.m. This is a free event, and all town residents are welcome to attend. The marching band will perform, complimentary refreshment will be served. And Senator Mark Pacico and Representative Patricia Hadad will also be there, and I'm sure we'll hear Senator Pacico singing. Come and sing along.
There will be a microphone.
Yes. Come and sing along some Christmas carols.
Will you be singing?
I asked this question.
Obligated.
I don't know.
Are we going to be given copies of the, because I don't know all the songs.
Start now, brush up.
Can I, what I'm going to ask anyone, anyone in this room, myself included, will someone print out the songs this year?
Dave Marvel runs the music. I finally figured this out, so.
It's the fourth year we always show up without the sheet music.
So the one year we had lyrics, I didn't have the, like, I was missing a page or something, and that happened to be one that we were singing, and I'm like, now just fade back here.
But I don't know if you were here yet, but one year they played like techno versions of the songs. And so Selectmen Gulard and I had like no idea when you chimed in.
I just swayed. Usually convince my older son to come up with me, and I mean like frozen, like there's all these people.
I know my granddaughter Caitlin's going to join us. I'm not sure about Nicholas. I hope to, if we have a dinosaur up on a stage, he'll come up.
Okay.
I have tons of dinosaurs. I'll make that.
Jurassic Park toys lying around somewhere.
He'll be your friend forever. The next announcement is Primetime Adult Care is seeking clients. If you know someone who would benefit from meeting new friends, trying new experiences, and staying active, please call Primetime at 508-669-6272. Approval of the warrants.
Oh, and on the Selectmen's reports, the Veterans Breakfast this year, very well attended. It was a great event. Our World War II veteran was there with his wife, but we had a, we had a very good turnout. I enjoyed talking to him.
I had a blast. I was like happy the entire day. It just, I just, it was a great way to start the day. I loved it.
It was very uplifting. He talked about, he served on, he's in the Navy. He served in the Mediterranean, both on the north side and the African side, and so it was very, very interesting. I loved to talk to people that have served in, you know, things like that.
I've never served, so just, I cannot imagine. So to speak to someone who did, I mean, my father did, so I get bits and pieces, but my father did a peacekeeping mission overseas. So to hear people who were in actual combat, not that it wasn't dangerous for my father, but it's just, it's very eye-opening. And just, you can't help but respect anyone that would risk their life for their country.
All I know is every time one of my brothers was coming home, it was a big party. My mother would cook a big meal. All the relatives would show up. Grandparents, whoever was left, you know, because over the years, obviously, we lost a few. But it, and rarely did we have, I don't think we ever had the three boys home at the same time. But there was always one coming home. I remember one brother came home from Vietnam. He was in infantry in July. I knew he was coming home in July, so the last snowstorm, I froze a whole bunch of snowballs.
I love that.
And when he came home, I said.
He threw a snowball at him. Welcome home.
Of course, by then, they were ice balls, but you know.
Welcome home.
Took it out of the icebox.
Oh, my goodness. That's such a sibling thing to do. I love that.
Because he talked about the horrendous heat and everything.
He needed the cool off.
And I said, hey, I was thinking of you this winter, when we were freezing, and you were dying with the heat and the bugs.
Saved a souvenir.
And you weren't here to shovel.
Yes, yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant 18A-20 in the amount of $96,549.12 payroll. 18B-20 in the amount of $23,574.17 payroll. 18C-20 in the amount of $286,571.40. 18D-20 in the amount of $184,000. All dated October 30th, be approved.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post substantial.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 19A-20 in the amount of $99,904.61 payroll. 19B-20 in the amount of $81,002.91. And warrant 19C-20 in the amount of $328,000. Even the last two being accounts payable, be approved, all dated November the 6th.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post substantial, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant number 28-20 in the amount of $99,008.58 payroll. 20B-20 in the amount of $158,428.40. 20C-20 in the amount of $2,220.20. And 20D-20 in the amount of $61,136. The last three being accounts payable, all dated November 13th, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post substantial, the ayes have it. There's no public here for public input, so we will be going into executive session, and I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session. We will not be returning back to an open meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Numbers 2 and 3. Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire union negotiations. And three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares potential litigation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post the substantial, the ayes have it. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Cable. Good night, everybody.